I would like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is December 19th, 2022, and it is 5:30 PM. And I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss MGL Section 30A, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position.
No move.
Excellent. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by roll call.
Brown, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zalinski, aye.
Taylor, aye. We will return to open session at 6 o'clock. Good evening. I would like to reopen the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, December 19th, 2022, at exactly 6 o'clock, and the board just returned from executive session. I would ask that you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask everyone to please silence your cell phones and notify the chair or if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, recognition. Any recognitions from the board?
Just a personal recognition. I just heard tonight that Brian House had passed. I didn't realize that. He did a lot for Falmouth and other towns with the Mass Estuaries Project, and I'm sad to hear that. He seemed like he was in good health, so I don't know what happened, but apparently he passed. Can go off just to his family?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Other announcements from the board?
I'd like to make an announcement. This past week, out in Chicago, our own board member, Angelae Scott Price, was recognized by AGU. It's the Advanced Earth and Space Science Group, and she had the honor of being selected as an AGU honoree, and it's bestowed upon individuals for meritorious work or service toward the advancement and promotion of discovery and solution science. Angelae was selected to receive the Science and Society Team Award, an honor that recognizes a team who employs collaborative models of scientific research, demonstrates equitable distribution of the outputs and impacts of research, and elevates efforts to produce and translate scientific knowledge to serve society. She has made an outstanding achievement and contribution by pushing the frontiers of science forward. She has also embodied AGU's shared vision of a thriving, sustainable, and equitable future for all powered by discovery, innovation, and action. And while she did this, she did it with integrity, respect, diversity, and collaboration while creating deep engagement in education and outreach. She got this award last week in Chicago, Illinois.
Did you know that was coming? Not all of that. Thanks, Nancy. I thought it was really, really important. Recognition, public announcements. Any announcements from the board?
Just to mention that the DEP has extended the comment period for the Title V regulation changes and the potential watershed permit option. So if anybody has interest in that, you might want to send comments to Mass DEP. Could be very expensive for our town. I would say everyone should be probably paying attention to that issue.
And is that through January 23rd?
31st.
31st, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in the discussion of your topic. It is not appropriate to use the public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Anyone here for public comment? Okay, we will begin with our budget presentation. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present this budget as interim town manager. I want to begin by saying that this budget that I am presenting this evening is very much a collective effort, which begins with the Select Board policy directives, specifically the operating budget policy adopted by the board earlier this year. And it is very much a collective work that relies on the department heads, who are represented here this evening. There are a couple who were unable to make it and sent to a department designee, but I want to acknowledge that what I am presenting this evening involves some difficult choices, but it's all built on the foundation of the terrific work that the department heads have done. They submitted their budget requests consistent with the policy that has been adopted by the board for this budget. So I'm going to describe some guiding principles for developing this budget recommendation. I will review our revenue estimates, highlight some of the expenditures, and then I will have some concluding remarks. So the guiding principles that I have in mind as I prepare this budget is first to ensure the long-term fiscal stability of the town. And sometimes that's referred to as structural balance, so we're looking at some very familiar themes that the board has heard over the years, which is recurring revenues for recurring expenses. We don't want to be overly aggressive in adding new staff or new budget commitments that we don't have a secure, long-term plan to absorb with the known revenues. We want to maintain basic service levels first, and we want to address Select Board priority, policy priorities that have been identified over the years, and particularly through the three workshop meetings that the board held this year, expanding on what had been done previously, a one session for strategic planning. This year, the board really dived deeper into strategic planning and identified some specific budget priorities that you asked me to incorporate into this budget, and I have done that. And then finally, I want to promote transparency by highlighting the budget changes with this presentation and with the budget that has been submitted to you. So some highlights for this year's budget. Maintaining service levels requires increases of more than 2.5% for some budgets. So by that, I'm saying we have inflationary pressures that we are beginning to see in this budget. I will identify some of them, but there are some accounts that are going up by significantly more than 2.5% that are needed to maintain our basic service levels. This budget does not require an override of Proposition 2.5 to support the proposals. The new initiatives and new positions that are included in this budget are informed by the Select Board's strategic plan and limited to available revenue growth. What this budget does not include is 14 additional firefighters, which are needed to staff six fire stations when the new Hatchville Station completes construction. And that is something that we have talked about, and Chair Taylor and I specifically have talked about how we are going to discuss this budget and discuss the fire staffing levels. We will have a separate meeting, a workshop meeting, on January 7th to look very closely at what our options are for adding those 14 additional firefighters and staying true to that policy goal to staff six fire stations. I also want to note that this budget does not include many legitimate department requests, and you won't see that necessarily in the numbers when you just look at the department requests and the town manager recommended budget, and that's because the departments, as I said, followed the instructions for submission, which were to stay within a 2.3% increase and to not add staff and not include new initiatives, so that we could bring you a budget that is balanced within available revenues. So again, long-term fiscal stability or fiscal discipline, what do we mean by that? We mean that recurring costs are supported by recurring revenues. Revenue estimates are substantially less than prior year actual revenues. So for example, the local receipts is the category that really varies the most within our revenue sources. This past year, fiscal '22, we took in about $30 million in local receipts. So if we were to estimate $30 million for next year, that would not be conservative revenue estimating. That would not be a good, long-term, sustainable plan to fund the town's needs. I'll get into, you know, the actual numbers that we looked at, but again, when we talk about fiscal discipline and long-term fiscal stability, we're talking about, among other things, conservative revenue estimates. So we are not relying on unreasonable estimates or sustaining a high level that may not be sustained over time. Also important for long-term fiscal stability is to include some buffer in budgeted expenditures where costs are difficult to control, and historically, we have left a significant buffer in health insurance and some of our energy accounts, and this budget continues that pattern. And finally, part of, one of the important elements of fiscal discipline is to maintain reserves as established by policy, which this budget does. And I'll go into the revenue outlook in some more detail. As the board is well aware, the lion's share of our revenue comes from the property tax levy. It's about 75% represented in dark blue in this pie chart. And the good news and bad news there is that that reliably goes up by 2.5% per year. It's fantastic that that's a reliable source of growth. We don't have to worry about that number going down. It would be great if it could go up by more than 2.5%, but it doesn't with the exception of new growth, and I'll talk about that in a moment. The next largest category of our revenues is local receipts. That's the 24.7 million, and then smaller amounts are coming from state revenue at 14 million and available funds at 2.2. So let's talk about new growth. New growth is a Department of Revenue term that is part of the Proposition 2.5 law, and what that Prop 2.5 law says is that the town can raise total property taxes by 2.5% more than was actually collected in the prior year, and there's an allowance for new growth, which represents new construction. So if the value of a house goes from $400,000 to $500,000, the town doesn't generate any new tax dollars as a result of that. However, if a new house is built or an addition is put on a house, under the Prop 2.5 law, that's considered new construction, that's new levy, and that is additional tax dollars for the town. So in aggregate, this chart shows what the new growth actual has been from FY 2019 to FY 2023, the tax rate that we just certified. And back in 2019, it was slightly less than $800,000. It peaked FY '22 at just over $1.6 million. It did come down a little bit in this most recent year to just over $1.4 million, and the estimate that I'm using for balancing the next year's budget FY '24 is $800,000. That's the same number we used last year, FY '23, and in FY '21, actually FY '19 through '21, that number was $700,000. So, you know, this is a, you know, certainly a positive, strong trend that we're able to continue to rely on, $800,000 in new growth. The, you know, we certainly hope that that number comes in a little higher, but the permits have begun to come down just a little bit off the peaks that we were seeing in the past two years, so I don't necessarily expect to be back at the $1.6 million level. Local receipts. So local receipts, there are over a dozen different items. Some of the larger ones are motor vehicle excise. The room excise tax is a large one. License and permits, ambulance fees, those are some of the larger local receipts that make up these totals. And what this chart shows is what our actuals have been back to 2007, and I want to focus just for a moment in these earlier years. You see the recession, 2007, 2008, then the recession started to impact our local receipts, and they went down in 2009, 2010, before coming back up in 2011. So just to point out that it's not an automatically ever increasing number, that when a recession hits, these numbers actually can go down as opposed to up. The line that I've drawn through this chart shows the amount that I have used for balancing the budget for next year. That's 24.7 million, and as you can see, that's well below the last couple of years of actual receipts, so these continue to be conservative revenue estimates, though it does represent a significant increase from last year. That is, the estimates I'm relying on are up significantly from the prior year, specifically $2.4 million more than last year. That's a 10.8% increase. Comparing that estimate to last year's actual, the estimate is about 80% of the FY '22 actual collection, and that ratio is about the same as it was last year and in several prior years looking back. So I'm not taking, you know, a more aggressive approach in terms of the portion of prior year actual revenues that I'm counting on to balance the next year's budget. I would highlight that of that $2.4 million, almost half of that is going to affordable housing, and that's consistent with Select Board adopted policy, and I'll break that out in more detail in a moment. Continuing on with the revenue outlook, state revenue changes do not significantly, don't change significantly from one year to another for the town. When I went back to FY '19 and looked at the town portion of the net state aid, it was just about the same as what it was for this current year, is actually $15,000 more in 2019 than it was for FY '23. Now, I'm looking at the net town aid, so the state giveth and the state taketh away. There's state revenues that we receive from the town, but there are also charges against, that we have to pay to the town or to other regional entities such as the county or the regional transit authority. So when I look at how our state aid is impacting us, I look at the net of those two. On the school side, there is, there has been some growth in net school aid, and, you know, looking at that same five-year timeframe, since fiscal year 2019, the school has received net school aid of $1.8 million more than it received in 2019. Lastly, looking at that last category of funds that make up the town's revenues, available funds, those are a list of accounts, and we separate them from local receipts because it's actual funds that are in hand. There are actual balances of monies that are used to offset a small portion of the budget. Some of those are restricted, for example, the embarkation fund, which is, you know, related to ferry impacts, or the Community Preservation Act. There are some limited dollars that come in to support the operating budget from the Community Preservation Act, and those are obviously very restricted. There are not significant changes in the available funds that I'm proposing for next year as compared to what we have in this year's budget. So moving on to expenditures, the largest portion of the budget for, on the expense side, is for wages, and in FY '24, there are not a lot of discretionary decisions left to be made, and by that I mean that most of the employee wage rates are settled through collective bargaining contracts. There are just two unions that are not yet settled. Those are Library and AFSMI Unit A, and also, we have not yet addressed increases for non-union employees in the FY '24 budget. When you go department by department, those non-union wage rates are still at FY '23 levels. However, we have money set aside in special articles, prior town meeting votes, that are more than sufficient to cover both those two unions and the non-unions, and I will be bringing proposals for the non-union to the Select Board for consideration, and then as collective bargaining moves forward, I'll be bringing those to the Select Board as well. So I do want to say that it is a significant increase that is included in this budget. We've been, we've begun to make more significant investments in employee wage rate increases. That is driven by the nature of the labor market and our, you know, we need to have competitive pay rates, and we need to balance that very carefully with what the town can afford to pay. So the recently settled collective bargaining agreements, as the Select Board is aware, have included not just 2% COLAs, but additional market adjustment monies and some other items in the collective bargaining contracts that have been adjusted to make our wage rates more competitive. So there is a significant investment in employee wage rates in this budget. And finally, for, with regard to seasonal wage rates, I know everyone is probably familiar that, like all employers throughout the state and the region, we had a very difficult time filling all of our seasonal positions, and we did increase the seasonal wage rates last year significantly. I'm proposing to increase another 15% this year, but we have been budgeting those seasonal budgets very conservatively. So in the Beach Department, in the Parks Department, Recreation Department, where we have large seasonal staff, Marine Environmental Services is another one. The way we've been historically done our budgets is we've said, okay, here's how many seasonal positions that we want to fill, here's the total number of weeks that we want to fill, and we budget for that entire amount. For many years, we have not come close to filling all of those, you know, those slots, those hours that we had hoped, that we'd budgeted for. So what I am doing with this budget is level funding the seasonal budgets, and I've looked at the accounts, and we can absorb a 15 percent increase without increasing those budgets just by having more realistic assumptions about how many positions we hire and how many weeks of the season they're actually going to be here. The college students that, you know, used to be here for longer or that we might want to be here for longer just aren't here. And, you know, we have many years that that's been the case, so it's time to be more realistic in how we budget for that. So we have some increases in areas that are difficult to control budgets. Sometimes you hear the term fixed costs. Some of these costs are more fixed than others, so I try not to use that term too loosely. The retirement assessment is going up by 920,000. That is a hard number. That is truly fixed. For fuel and solid waste, we have incorporated an increase of 378,000. That's four and a half percent, and that may be tight, to be quite honest. And, you know, thankfully, we have terrific reserves, have tried to strike a balance there that if we are a little short on fuel, we have, we have a way to address that, and hopefully it's not a long-term situation where we're going to need to be at that, at that budget level for many years. So I've tried to strike a balance there. There's a significant increase because I know we're going to need it for gasoline and diesel and for solid waste. It's a contractual increase. But in both of those cases, we can't pinpoint exactly what those costs are going to be. So I've, these are the estimates that I've come up with. Our property and liability insurance, again, this is an estimate, up 5 percent to 88,000. We do have some positive news also within this category of difficult-to-control costs with respect to electricity and natural gas. Our pricing is locked in through the end of next year and locked in at very reasonable increases. So, and within the budgets, we have, we have maintained for a number of years a pretty healthy buffer. So we're in really good shape. I did not have to increase those allocations for electricity and natural gas. For health insurance, we do not yet have firm pricing for next year. However, the trends are encouraging. Our year-to-date is less than 2 percent above the prior year, and we have maintained for many years, as the Board is probably aware, a very large buffer in our health insurance account, which we've used to transfer in, you know, I think for several years now. We have transferred some surplus money appropriated to health insurance to patch some holes during the middle of the fiscal year and prior years. So I've actually reduced that health insurance total by 100,000. It's a very minor increase, you know, and that will give us plenty of a buffer to cover whatever the increase might be, 5 percent, you know, the very, at the very most, 10 percent increase in health insurance, and we could cover that if that came to pass. But I don't expect it'll be 10 percent. The last item that certainly bears mentioning is information technology, and we have a significant investment in information technology in this budget. It's a 325,000 increase, which is 32 percent. Our IT director, Don Lewis, has looked, done a zero-based budget and gone through in detail what is needed to sustain the town's operations there. I spent quite a bit of time with her in going through that budget, and I believe that this increase is truly needed to ensure our network continuity and cover the increasing licensing fees for hardware and software. We have more and more of our, of our IT needs are being met by, you know, server maintenance, and there's licensing on server, Outlook, and there's licensing increases for Outlook. But also, there's a need to invest in some outside consulting resources to make sure that we have a really secure, stable network, and that if something were to go wrong, we have resources to deploy, to deploy very quickly to make sure that we have, that we maintain that continuity that we are more and more reliant upon for our everyday business. And I would note, this includes public safety. The IT department has, we've sort of gone back and forth about having separation and then bringing it back under one umbrella for IT, and we're, and we're back under the one umbrella model, which I, I feel is, is really where we need to be to allow for cross-training and better support for public safety. The School Department is obviously the largest single department in the town, and meeting the educational needs of our community is a top priority. The superintendent has identified increased costs related to an increased number of high need students, and she has articulated those very clearly with the Finance Committee and with myself. There is, in this budget, a 2.3 percent increase to the base budget. That builds on an FY 23 budget that is substantially higher than FY 22, and the Board probably will recall that at this last town meeting, we appropriated an additional 1.4 million in net school aid that the School Department received, and that was, became known after the FY 23 budget was initially adopted. So there's a much higher base budget for FY 23 that this FY 24 builds upon. And in addition to that, the Board voted to allocate 500,000 from the room excise tax increase. This is, goes back to when the short-term rentals were first being taxed, and there was an agreement with the, with the School Committee that half of the 1.000 anticipated in increased revenue from the short-term rental tax would be allocated to the School Department, and that's included in this FY 24 budget. So the total increase for the School Department for FY 24 is 1,751,000, or 3.2 percent. Funding our reserves is an important element of long-term fiscal stability. I've identified some of the balances of some of the, of some of those reserves that we speak of. We have five, about 5.6 million remaining in free cash uncommitted coming out of the November town meeting. Our capital stabilization fund stands at about 4.6 million, and the, the policy adopted by the Select Board for the capital stabilization fund is to maintain 2 to 5 percent of the town's budget in the capital stabilization fund. So that's a range of 3.1 to 7.8 million. You know, we're right there in the middle of it. This budget includes a million to be appropriated into the capital stabilization fund to get us a little higher, on the higher end of that. And that's the same number that has been approved in recent years, and it allows us to continue to put money in and to take money out for what I like to call lumpy expenditures. For example, at this past town meeting, we had a fire engine and an ambulance. Those were two large items that would normally be difficult to fund from free cash alone. We had this, a healthy balance in capital stabilization that we were able to draw upon to meet that need and still fund the other town department needs from free cash. We are continuing the recent pattern of 500,000 allocated for OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, and really what that means is retiree health insurance. That's a number that sort of strikes a balance between making sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where retiree health insurance is becoming a larger and larger portion of the budget that we're not able to pay for, but also not putting too much excess in a reserve fund for a situation which will never occur, which is to say the town of Falmouth going out of business. So our total unfunded liability is this really high number that, you know, I don't believe it's responsible to plan to ever set all of that money aside because the town's not going to go out of business. This is, again, strikes a balance, and by having a recurring revenue source and making consistent contributions to that fund, we will stay in good standing with the bond rating agencies. We do not require a contribution to the general stabilization fund because we are already at the top end of our goal for that, for that particular stabilization. And for these other accounts, there is no specific policy goal and no contributions planned to be appropriated into those other accounts. So moving on to the strategic planning priorities of the Select Board, as I mentioned, there's a significant investment in affordable housing included in this budget. 500,000 is allocated from the portion of the rooms excise tax, or a portion associated with the short-term rental. 350,000 is an estimate based on the increase in the rooms excise tax that was voted by town meeting effective this past July, bringing the rooms excise tax rate from 5 percent to 6 percent. And there was also a new community impact fee adopted by town meeting. That was an article sponsored by the Select Board at the recommendation of the Affordable Housing Committee, and we've collected about 48,000 this year-to-date in that community impact fee. That's, and that is paid, it's 3 percent, that's applied to professionally managed short-term rental units. So, you know, that's, that 75,000 is an estimate of what we might generate in a full year. So you will see that the proposal, and I think the understanding of the Select Board and town meeting was that those additional revenues were going to be appropriated into the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, which is the fund that we use to subsidize affordable housing projects to generate additional housing and to preserve housing. Also included in this budget is 50,000 in the Human Services Budget for Homelessness And again, the, so the notion there is that these new revenues were generated for the specific purpose of affordable housing, and that's one of them being applied to homeless prevention. The Board identified a sustainability coordinator position as a priority to include in this year's budget. That was also a non-binding town meeting article that was approved a year ago. This budget includes the upgrade of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer from a half-time position to a full-time position and a pay grade increase for that position based on a new job description and the rating of that job description. So the total salary in the budget is 100,000. The increase is 60,000. So we had, you know, 40 for half of that position before. Another priority specifically identified by the Select Board at your strategic planning on October 1st was a service increase for the East Falmouth Library so that they could be open on Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that's a modest investment of 14,000. This budget includes a new position for the Parks Department. This was the top priority need identified by Peter McConney, Director of Public Works, and it was recommended by me and, and by the Select Board included among the priorities to be included in this budget. Because of the workload that we see in that department with increased number of, of park facilities that are being maintained, an increase in the time required for tree work. There, there are more storms, and those storms are more severe, and the amount of tree work required has grown significantly in the past decade. So this is identified as the best way to manage that need and free up the superintendent from being in the field and being able to oversee this significant operation. And the last item here is, certainly falls within one of the priority areas for the Select Board. It was not one that was specifically discussed and voted on at the strategic planning session. At the time, the, we didn't have good estimates of what it would cost for vehicle and body cameras for the Police Department, and thanks to Chief Dunn and his research, he was able to find an option that was significantly less than what we initially thought it might cost, so that we have 75,000 in this budget, and that is sufficient to equip the officers that are on patrol on a daily basis and all of the vehicles. It is not sufficient to provide a dedicated camera to each patrol officer. So for those days when we call in more than a, than a standard shift, for example, July 4th, or if there's a particular incident, and all the officers are called in, we're not going to have a body camera for every officer. But for your routine daily assignments, there will be a camera for each officer on duty. And that's, you know, probably self-explanatory, but I think it's an important investment in transparency and accountability. I have great confidence in our Police Department, and I know from speaking with other departments that very often, one of the benefits of having body cameras and vehicle cameras is that it demonstrates that the police officers have acted appropriately, and it can be used to counter complaints that are not necessarily valid. But certainly, you know, it's there for full transparency and accountability. So in conclusion, I want to say that the town is fortunate to be able to absorb some significant cost increases that are required to maintain basic services without a tax increase and without having to make offsetting cuts elsewhere. That's a credit to the long-term discipline that the Select Board has exercised with the assistance of the Finance Committee and the approval of town meeting. We look forward to the Select Board's feedback on this proposed budget and the detailed Finance Committee review to follow. And as a reminder, the Select Board is scheduled to vote to transmit the budget to the Finance Committee with or without amendments on January 9th. And I'm happy to take your questions.
Any questions from the Board? Comments?
Comments, say, I was just impressed with the clarity of the information that you provided, you know, your policy statements and an explanation of the changes that you've made in the budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
I have a question about, we identified at the Water Waste Committee last week that oftentimes the permitting process for dredging projects, the costs get, you know, inflated as we go forward, and projects get put off and delayed, and I think the committee might take it up at the next meeting of whether or not there should be a fund for, like a reserve fund for permitting for dredging. And what would be the process, formal process for that? Would the committee recommend it to the Select Board, and the Select Board recommend consideration in the budget?
Yeah, I think that's right. The committee can recommend it to the Select Board, and then, you know, I can do some research with the Finance Team and outline some proposals. Speaking of the Finance Team, I don't want to leave tonight without specifically recognizing the Finance Department. Vicky Rose, Tricia Favuli, Patty O'Connell, and Melanie Bush were tremendously helpful to me in putting this budget together, and I want to acknowledge their efforts and thank them for that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson-Staub.
Peter, could you adjust the thermostat? It's getting pretty warm in here. Thank you. There's a lot of bodies here.
Yeah. Don't put on heat seats.
Will we read on the 9th? We'll have a chance to ask more questions in more detail for these matters. And so on the 7th, and on the 7th, too. I know we have department chairs here, and I want to thank them for showing up tonight. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Johnson-Staub, we're going to continue with your preliminary report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was, was that an invitation to allow a moment for the department heads to leave if they choose?
Absolutely.
Or ask for more money.
You're more than welcome to stay.
Thank you.
I just thought we had a full house today. Everybody was excited to be here.
Yeah, wow.
That's what you call packing the house.
Yeah. Heading down to Liamson.
For our meeting on the 9th, if we know we have some sort of questions, it is appropriate to ask department chairs to come on.
Thanks. Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the preliminary report, the next item on the business agenda... So for the preliminary report, the next item on the business agenda.
Folks, I'm going to ask you to just keep it down. We need to keep going with our meeting, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the agenda, we have a report from the Community Preservation Committee. And there is a, you have a slide, you had a slide presentation in your packet. Sandy Cuny, the Vice Chair, and Maureen will be here to present that.
Okay.
That's followed by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application from the Falmouth Housing Corp. for $2.5 million for the Scranton Main project. This is a second request for this 48-unit age-restricted project. This is, all of these 48 units would be affordable units, and many of them deeply affordable below the, at 30% to 60% of area median income. The additional funds are requested due to the spike in construction costs and interest rates since the first subsidy of $2.3 million was approved by the Select Board. And I want to emphasize that even with this increase, the total subsidy request is $100,000 per unit, which is within the Select Board's funding guidelines. Next, you have another Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application, this one from the Falmouth Housing Trust for $32,500 for Pheasant Lane. This again is an additional request. The fund, additional funds are requested due to the rise in mortgage interest rates since the first subsidy of $100,000 was approved by the Select Board. The increase in mortgage rates affects the affordability of the house to the income-eligible buyer to whom the Falmouth Housing Trust will be selling the house. The sale price is regulated by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development based on area median income and mortgage interest rates, among other factors. This supplemental request brings the total subsidy to $132,500, which does exceed the Board's funding guidelines. Nevertheless, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group recommends approval under the circumstances. The Community Preservation Committee has also recommended approval, and I recommend this as well, to, as this is the only way for this existing structure to be converted to a legal affordable unit. Next on your agenda, we have a Mayflower Wind access agreement. The Select Board previously approved an access agreement to allow Mayflower Wind to access town property at Worcester Court and Central Park to conduct preliminary investigations and environmental studies associated with its proposed electric cable installation in Falmouth. These agreements have expired, and Mayflower has not completed its investigations. Mayflower now seeks to extend the prior agreements and to add a new site, the Kite Park on Grand Ave. The Select Board, Select Board approval is required before Mayflower can apply to the Conservation Commission to conduct soil boring tests. I want to emphasize that these temporary access agreements do not in any way imply town support or Select Board support for the Mayflower project in Falmouth. The testing is needed for Mayflower to develop plans to be submitted to the Massachusetts Energy Facility Sitings Board and other agencies for review. The town will also review these plans to be submitted by Mayflower with the assistance of a consulting engineering firm. As we have discussed, the Select Board will hold another public forum after updated plans have been submitted by Mayflower and evaluated, and then consider whether the Board wishes to approve easements and Article 97 relief that are required for the project to move forward. I have drafted a motion for the Board's consideration that makes it explicit, a vote to approve temporary access agreements does not constitute a vote of approval for the Next on your agenda is a broadband update. David Eisenberg will present a brief presentation describing two programs that are available to income-eligible residents to obtain discounted internet service. Several town departments have taken an active role in promoting and assisting residents to sign up for these subsidies. I do not believe we have staff capacity to apply for a grant to administer an ongoing program with the detailed reporting requirements such a federal grant entails. Next, you will be discussing the Town Manager selection process. As a potential candidate, I will recuse myself from those discussions. Then you have annual license renewals, many of them. Our office has received complete applications for all those listed on your agenda. For the consent agenda, among the three items is approval of Eversource easements for the construction of the electric cable that is being installed to provide Martha's Vineyard with a reliable power supply. And these are the easements for which the Board voted to enter a memorandum of understanding under which the town is receiving $800,000 from Eversource to mitigate construction impacts. The form of the easements has been approved by Town Council. I recommend approval of, of those easements and the other two consent agenda items. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to business. We have a report from the Community Preservation Committee. And we have given you 15 minutes.
Great, thank you. So I'm Maureen Thomas. Yes, do you have the presentation? That would be great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you can use the arrows to.
Excellent, thank you so much. So I'm Maureen Thomas, I'm the Community Preservation Coordinator. It's nice to be here with you all this evening. Thank you for inviting us. I'm happy to be here on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee to present the Committee's 2002 Annual Report. And this is the current roster of the CPC members. I think you're familiar with the makeup of the Board. There's four at-large members appointed by the Select Board, and then there's five members that are appointed by sending boards, including the Housing Authority, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Recreation Committee, and the Historical Commission. So there, it's a nine-member board. And our current chair is Russ Robbins. Sandy Cuny is here, she's the Vice Chair. Steve Patton is the clerk, he's the Housing Authority rep. Michael Stone is the financial officer. John Drooly is the Planning Board representative. Bob Brown is the Recreation Committee rep. Betsy Gladfelter is our new Conservation Commission rep. Tamsin George is our new Historical Commission rep. And Thomas Crane is our newest at-large member. We have a lot of long-serving members on the committee and then some new members. So it's a great group. And I'd also like to recognize Sam Patterson. He's the Select Board's liaison to the CPC. And Sam has provided a lot of support to us at the committee meetings and beyond. So thank you so much, Sam, for all of your assistance. This is a chart of the CP Fund revenues from fiscal year 2005 through fiscal year 2022, with the fiscal year on the left-hand side, the local 3% surcharge. In the next column, the trust fund distribution, that's the state match contribution to the CP funds. In the third column, the percentage of the state match of local revenues, and then the total revenue. So if you take a look at the bottom for the totals, you'll see that the local 3% surcharge has generated over $45 million for the community since its inception. And then the state match has contributed over $17 million. The average percent match from the state is approximately 39%. And then the total revenue is an amazing $63 million, more than $63 million. And all of this funding goes towards community housing, open space, recreation, and historic preservation. And important to remember that these projects would not be funded through the general government budget. So really important projects to preserve the community and improve quality of life here in Falmouth. And this is a map showing all of the CP Fund projects dispersed throughout town. It's quite a few. This map comes from the CP Fund website. We work with a consultant to host a website that provides the history of all of the CP Fund projects from the beginning. And you can find that website at cpfundfalmouth.org. It's a great resource. I actually use it all of the time to look at the history of the CP Fund in Falmouth. And this is a pie chart showing the use of CPA funds from fiscal year 2006 through fiscal year 2022. You can see that the land bank debt has taken a large portion of those funds at approximately 47%. The land bank was replaced by the CPA in 2005, and we inherited the debt and the payback, the debt service on the land bank. So that was approximately $30 million. The town importantly set aside all of the funds to repay that debt. So in a dozen years, that debt will be repaid after the fiscal year '24 debt service payment. The balance will be approximately $1.5 million. So we're almost there. But that went toward open space preservation and recreation projects even before the CPA. And then next, community housing has used approximately 19% of the CPA funds. And recreation, approximately 18%. Historic preservation, approximately 11%. Open space, approximately 7%. And then the administration of the fund, approximately 3%. And this is just another way to look at the pie chart with the total dollar amounts provided by category. And you all may remember that April 2022 Town Meeting projects, we had four historic preservation projects approved, two recreation projects approved. We also had a Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund appropriation, a historic preservation reserve, and then the CPC administrative budget. And then looking ahead to April 2023 Town Meeting, the CPC has reviewed these projects and will be recommending these to Town Meeting next April. These include the Upper Coonamessett Restoration Project, the Little Pond Conservation Area Phase II Public Access Improvement Project, the Edward Marx Building Exterior Restoration Phase II Project, the Old Berry and Ground Ground Penetrating Radar Survey, the Dr. Francis Wick's House and Historical Artwork Restoration Phase II Project. And then our biggest project in terms of funding is the Highfield Hall Exterior Restoration and Water Abatement Project. Interestingly, again, next April, we'll be looking at four historic preservation projects and two open space and recreation projects, just like this April. There'll also be a Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund appropriation. The CPC started discussing this at their December 9th meeting, and we will be taking it up again at the first meeting in January, which is January 12th. And they'll be voting on that amount at that time. And then again, the CPC administrative budget has been approved at that amount. And then for the next funding round, so the CPC typically sets their calendar at the beginning of every calendar year in January, so they'll be reviewing that at their January 12th meeting. But typically, only time urgent, time urgent projects go on the November Town Meeting with typically a deadline in mid-April. And then all other non-time urgent projects will go on the next April Town Meeting, April 2024, with the deadline usually in mid-August. And important to note that the time urgent criteria must be met for projects at the November Town Meeting, and that requires that one of three criteria be met. So risk of significant loss of funding for a project, risk to public safety, or damage or loss to a town asset, or an unforeseen necessity that might be uncovered during the implementation of another project that's already been funded, that would expand the project's scope or the cost. And this slide shows some photos of some recently accomplished CP Fund projects. And with that, I will say thank you very much for inviting us, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Questions or comments from the Board?
No comments, just thanks for all your good work.
Thank you.
Very well done, thank you.
Excellent overview, Maureen, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. We will continue with business. Acting as trustees, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, discussion and vote on application from the Falmouth Housing Corp. for $2.5 million, additional funding for affordable age-restricted, age-restricted housing project at 24 Scranton Ave. and 763 Main Street. We heard the recommendation from the interim Town Manager. Any discussion among the Board?
Disappointing, but that's just the reality of the environment we're in right now, so.
Madam Chair, there's no more discussion. I move that the Board, acting as trustees of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, grant $2.5 million to Falmouth Housing Corp. for the construction of 48 units of affordable rental housing for seniors aged 62 and older at 24 Scranton Ave. and 763 Main Street. This amount is in addition to the $2.3 million previously approved, bringing the total subsidy for the property of $4.8 in total. It's authorized the interim Town Manager to execute a commitment letter setting forth the terms of financial award of the Falmouth Housing Trust. Falmouth Housing Corporation.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, discussion and vote on application from Falmouth Housing Trust for $32,000 additional funding for affordable housing project at 33 Pheasant Lane. Comments from the Board?
Just one question. How could it be in this environment that the state, or DHCD, I believe it was, lowered the sale price of the house? Am I understanding that correctly?
You are, and the reason is, they have a formula. It's all based on what someone at the area median income can afford. But part of that calculation is what is their mortgage cost going to be? Part of that calculation is what is the mortgage interest rate? So the mortgage interest rate went up from 4% to 7%, and that factors into what mortgage, the size of the mortgage that the person can afford, and therefore the sale price that Falmouth Housing Trust can, can sell it for.
Interesting math. Okay, thank you.
It was a catch 22.
Any other comments or questions?
Excuse me, Nancy, it's $32,500. Peter did read it. I know it says it incorrectly on the agenda.
It does.
But he corrected it.
$32,500. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's no more discussion. I move that the Board, acting as trustee to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, grant $32,500 to Falmouth Housing Trust to place a permanent deed restriction on the existing house at 33 Pheasant Lane. This amount is in addition to the $100,000 previously approved, bringing the total subsidy for the property to $132,500 in total. And to authorize the interim Town Manager to execute a commitment letter setting forth the terms of the financial award to the Falmouth Housing Trust.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, abstain.
Okay. Thank you. All right, consider, number four, business. Consider approval of access agreement to the Mayflower, to, to allow Mayflower to conduct certain investigations and studies at Worcester Park, Central Park, and the Kite Park located at Zero Grand Ave.
Madam Chair, I would just add that the form of the access agreement has been reviewed by Town Council.
I think there was a, the question about if, if we approve them to do this boring, is there other information the town can gain from this work? And tandem with Public Works or any other department?
So I would, I would answer the question this way, and if it's not a direct answer, I apologize. The, you know, the, the process requires, in order for Mayflower to determine, you know, where they can feasibly technically put the electric cable, they need to do some soil borings. So that's a necessary part of the process for them to file plans and, and be able to justify them and, and complete them. The plans get filed with the Energy Facility Sitings Board. We then have our consulting engineers paid for by Mayflower, but hired by the town, reporting to the town, review those plans so that, you know, we also have the benefit of all of that information. But I think probably the information that we are going to be most interested in, is it going to be directly related to the soil borings? I guess, I don't know. You know, we're going to be interested in, are they disturbing the eel grass? Are there any environmental resources that are being disturbed? Those are among the studies that, from my understanding, I don't know about, again, specifically the. specifically the soil borings, but this agreement allows Mayflower generally to physically get onto the property and conduct various environmental studies and feasibility studies so they can determine whether or not to submit a formal plan that we then review.
And is all the data from the testing reviewed by the town?
Whatever is submitted, I guess I don't know. You know, it's not our testing information. Whatever plans are submitted is accessible to the town. We do have a representative of Mayflower Wind here if you want to ask that specific question.
I would, actually.
Dan Hubbard from Mayflower Wind.
Aye.
So the question is, we'd be happy to share, to the greatest extent that we can, any of the information that we come across. And largely it'll be studies of soil type, any sediment that's of archaeological significance, we'd be happy to deal.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brown, did you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to reflect back to when we did this initial approval, a year and a half ago, or whatever, quite a while. And at that time, it seemed rather innocuous just to give them permission to check the soil. I didn't really get a real sense of what the scope of the project would be, and I don't think I fully understood what was being proposed. I still don't really have a full knowledge or understanding, but I feel like I have a better understanding. And I just don't really think I want to encourage further development research in the previously identified areas. We did ask them to go take a look at the Kite Park. I'm kind of inclined to just say, let's just check out the Kite Park, because from what I could see so far, I just don't feel like the amount of infrastructure that's going to be required for this project is going to fit in either of the other two areas that we've previously approved. So I'm a little reluctant to encourage more research there.
Any other comments?
I agree with Mr. Brown. I'd be in favor of a nay on both counts.
I have another question.
Yes, please.
So the other approval that was done before expired, but I don't think I see an expiration on this one. So is this, or did I miss when, how long this is good for?
Yeah, I believe the term, so the parties acknowledge this is on page three, item number two, term. Agreement shall commence December one, two thousand twenty-two, and expire one hundred eighty days following the date hereof.
Okay, so, thank you.
So I just want to follow up on Mr. Brown's comment.
I'm sorry, if I leave it there, that's not going to be an accurate depiction, because this clause goes on to talk about automatic renewal terms.
Okay. And that's why it's not in the motion we have listed? That's what I was wondering about.
Yeah, the motion, so the purpose of the motion wasn't to reiterate what's already in the agreement. The purpose of the motion was really more a policy statement of the board of what your, what your policy position on the project is, big picture.
Thank you. So I'm based, I just want to follow up on what Mr. Brown said. So because they haven't done any testing, is that correct, on the other two sites?
I would have to defer to Mr. Hubbard.
And that was my question, by the way, is to get a response from Mr. Hubbard.
There's been initial, what's called Phase One A, which is like ground penetrating radar and like, and visual inspections. So what we're proposing in this is small test pits to examine.
Okay, so if I follow up on Mr. Brown's point, because the time period ran out, am I correct? So we could modify this to go only to one site to do the testing? Is that what you're asking?
That's why I asked you to the board to consider.
Right, exactly. So I just want to make sure that we can do that, because they didn't, they didn't complete what they needed to do within the time of the last vote, correct?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Could we also have clarification on the actual boring itself? The, what, you just said pits?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So it's, what's being proposed is essentially what they're called Phase One B, which are essentially, they're roughly about a foot and a half square, test pits that can be a few feet deep to examine the sediment layers. That's really what they look like. And for, they'll be looking at Kite Park, and then also the access agreements would cover, excuse me, I lose my voice, would cover Worcester Court and Central Park with a number of borings that we would discuss the plans for, set to probably nothing sooner than January, weather permitting, if not probably later than that.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I would just defend, keep the scope as it is. This is eventually going to be decided, as I understand it, by the Energy Facility Siting Board.
Yes, sir.
So as much information as we can provide to that decision would, I think, in the long run, be in the interest of the citizens of Falmouth.
Any other comments from the board?
Well, I mean, when you say that it's more information, I guess that's certainly true, but it certainly also enables further exploration of those sites. And I'm predisposed to feel that, I don't think that those are really good sites for this type of stuff. When we have the fireworks, there's thousands and thousands of people. I'm not clear yet on how much signage is going to be there, how much, what's going to be really visible. I don't really have a real concept or a real presentation of what's really going to be on the ground there. And I'm not sure I want to continue to encourage it when I don't really feel like I'm getting a real full scope of what we're actually inviting.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I, again, I think it's the Energy Facility Siting Board that's going to make these decisions ultimately. And exactly the arguments that you're making are the kinds of arguments we could make to that board. But if we've, you know, shortcutted the opportunity to actually provide the developer, I'll call him at this point, to actually make that kind of a decision, I just think we're cutting our, you know, cutting off our nose despite a face.
Madam Chair, you looking for a motion?
I'm just wondering if there's any more discussion from the board?
Is there any comment?
Wait one second, please.
Well, I made my case, so, no, I don't really have anything else to add other than, I think we're good.
Okay. Ms. Scott Price, did you have any other questions?
No, I think I've asked my questions.
Mr. Zalinski, any other questions or comments?
Nope.
I'm going to take a few public comments. Let's start with you, and then David, and then we'll go into the back. And then Mr. Neto, okay? So we have four to start.
Greg Masmanian, Precinct Two. So let me preference all my comments saying that I'm in support of clean energy, but I'm opposed to an industrial application that Mayflower proposes in any residential village of Falmouth. Two years ago, this, the previous Select Board approved test drillings in the Heights. While not a great deal of information was known or even understood by the residents or businesses, a grassroots effort was established to study and educate themselves in an effort to be objective in this whole proposal. Over this lapse, last, lapsed period, Mayflower has done everything in their corporate arsenal to persuade and circumvent town zoning, land deeds, and even petition the state for exclusion of Article ninety-seven of the Massachusetts Constitution. On June eighth of this year, overwhelming opposition to Mayflower's plan was heard by this board, and shortly thereafter, our interim town manager filed an intervention order with the EFSB. Much has transpired, and in the five New England states to include Massachusetts, are questioning the validity of onboarding hundreds of cables from these wind farms onto shorelines in Massachusetts and the other states. So, that being said, it's an industrial application. And if you contact the people in Barnstable, who actually approved one of these agreements, and see what they did to Coville Beach, and now it's going to be Osterville, and people are up in arms. And if we sign any agreement with Mayflower, we're opening this up to every village in Falmouth. It's only a start. So today, we're here again, and we're deciding whether to permit further testing in the Heights with the caveat that there's no endorsement. Please, people, when someone invites you to a party, you got to open the door. And this will be an endorsement for them to go further, and they'll bring this up to the EFSB that we allowed it. Any vote tonight for the testing in the Heights on this matter in a residential zoned versus industrial zoned area would be a shameful representation of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moriarty, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Dave Moriarty, Falmouth, Massachusetts, Precinct Six. I have a few questions for Mayflower Wind, if possible.
You can ask them through the chair.
Could we get the answers to the questions we asked on May eighth, please? We were supposed to get them months and months and months and months ago.
Okay.
Did they forget we were still here?
Can I have your next question?
Sure. This, to me personally, I've looked at the plans. It's a brand-new project. It's an entirely new project. It's a DC cable. The sub-plants are in a different area. It's different roads are being used. It's not the same. What is the start date of this project? Because the old project is dead. It died June eighth, as a matter of fact. They killed it June eighth because they killed the AC cable project June eighth. So is this a new project?
Okay, I have that question. Give me your next one, because then I will, I will ask Mayflower to answer them.
Thank you. We don't have the infrastructure to move any of this energy. Do you realize that? The citizens of Cape Cod are going to be asked to pay for all this new infrastructure. You're going to have to pay for all of this, all the way up.
Mr. Moriarty, please speak to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Why would we want to, why would we want to pay for a multinational oil company with no allegiance to America, Massachusetts, Falmouth, Massachusetts, or the citizens who are going to pay for all this? Why would we want to pay for their infrastructure, for their projects? And why would we be doing all this? We've always put the cart before the horse in Massachusetts when it comes to renewable energy. This, you know, this fake it and take it in Massachusetts just isn't working anymore. We're not, the citizens of Massachusetts aren't going to take this anymore. Beacon Hill cannot run these projects. Beacon Hill can't run Falmouth, Massachusetts anymore. And tonight's the night that the citizens of Falmouth are taking their town back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. There was a woman in the back with glasses. Yes, you're up next. And then, sir, you, and then I'll take Mr. Neto. Okay?
I would like to begin with saying thank you, Sam and Doug, because I think there's a little hope on the horizon. I ask myself, why would the state do this? There is no answer, but it hurts me more that I ask myself, why would Falmouth agree to this?
Do you identify yourself, please?
Carol Zemian, Amherst Ave., twelve Amherst Ave., in the Heights. Owned the house over fifty years. It's very precious to us. Our children, you know, love it. We've loved it as children ourselves. Our parents are lucky enough to have purchased it ages and ages ago. And it is really disconcerting that we are not taking this more seriously, or at least the company isn't. So I thank you for opening that door for us tonight. It will leave, what Greg said, an industrial footprint, not a residential footprint. It will destroy small businesses who are barely recovering, because our streets will be a mess during construction. Worse, we have small, tiny, little streets, a lot of one-ways. Where are those large trucks going to be going? How are they going to get there? Where are they going to park? Most of it is hazardous to our health, our children's health, the magnetic fields. There's a lot of facts about leukemia associated with children from magnetic fields. We are not even sure, because research hasn't been as good as it should be of late. It probably could affect adults, brain cancer. We don't know. Pancreatic cancer, we don't know. And we're going to bring that into a densely populated area? So I ask, and I'm very confused now, if these two sites, they didn't meet the deadline, why are we even talking about them? And why open up and applaud you two? Why are we going to say, oh, that's okay, we got another one for you? No, we don't have another one for them. I think about, you know, the yacht club. I don't belong to it, okay? It was a little expensive for me. But that will be impacted terribly. The new Tides Motel, God bless those people. They brought beauty to the Heights. And what are we going to do? Take it away. For whom? For what? Last speaker? For big corporations? And for Beacon Hill, I guess, because that's what it appears. Now, it's interesting that a recent article ran in the Boston Globe. There are two. I think one of my colleagues, Neighbor's Dave, is going to address one. And it's very, very important, people listen. But I'm going to mention the one that was on fusion, nuclear fusion, not fission. The success that they are having right now, some scientists at MIT, and I really applaud MIT, as we all should, you know, there's a lot of good that goes on there, not all good. Okay, that's another news story, isn't it? But that being said, they say they are very, very close. In fact, the scientists at MIT have a corporation, they say they're moving very quickly ahead, and they think that nuclear fusion will be on the scene. And it will not create any pollution. It is the real alternative energy. It's not windmills. Windmills blades alone will create huge graveyards of metal blades and bodies of the mills that hold up the blades. They're not biodegradable. The batteries that are created for those windmills are, literally secrete a lot of nuclear waste, more, they say, than a nuclear plant, one farm alone. While that is being produced, those batteries, not only are we creating nuclear waste, but we're killing a lot of people who are producing those batteries for us. But, you know, what's a few lives here and a few lives there? These lives in particular, that I speak of, are not in the USA. Because a lot of those batteries are not made in the USA. They're made in China. But those kids' lives are probably as important as ours, as we fight for ours in Falmouth Heights, let alone the precious minerals that are being used for those batteries. According to the article I read, and there's other articles available that are spinning off that article, the MIT scientists say that it is the most clean form of energy when this is going to happen, they assume very soon, fusion, nuclear fusion. It's not only clean, it's inexpensive. And the interesting articles that have been running on Mayflower's project, one of the big problems is, it's getting too expensive. They're even having second thoughts. So I just ask, if we can keep those other sites out of the picture, boy, what a wonderful day. I think we should all go celebrate somewhere. And if we could not offer another one, the Kite Field, we should all have a party. And we'll certainly thank the Select Board for really looking out for the citizens. Because it's not just the Heights. It goes way beyond the Heights. And I think the forum that we attended, that somebody referenced today, this goes all the way down one-twenty-eight. There are people that are worried, way beyond the Heights. This isn't just Merviston Heights.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for listening, and you have a lot of work, and maybe it'd be good work that you do.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm Dave Bosnowski, the president of the Falmouth Heights Merviston Neighborhood Association, also a resident of Lucerne Avenue. I'm here tonight once again. I did write you a letter earlier today. I didn't get it in in time to get it into your packet, so I don't know if many of you had an opportunity to read it. But I'm here today just as to maintain our opposition to the onboarding of Mayflower's cables in anywhere in Falmouth Heights. The suggestion of the Kite Park is no different than Worcester Park or Central Park. As far as we're concerned, you move a block either way, we're still within a densely populated residential community. These cables don't belong there. They belong in a, in a commercial site. We applauded Mayflower's efforts in bringing their first set of cables to Brayton Park. We applauded Mayflower's efforts in bringing their first set of cables to Brayton Point down in Somerset, and now they're having their own problems down there with the state of Rhode Island EFSB, as you're probably aware. They're being opposed by the residents, the fishermen in the Rhode Island community. So they've faced delays down there. The Energy Facility Siting Board in Rhode Island got wind of the renegotiation desire on behalf of some of the wind companies and issued Mayflower a, I forgot what the word was. A show-cause order. And the show-cause hearing was to be tonight in Rhode Island, and Mayflower asked for a postponement of that to ready themselves for that eventuality. But the bottom line is, the kite park is named the kite park for one reason. It was originally historically known as the Hotel Park, when the original planned resort in Falmouth Heights was designed. And over a series of transactions, it eventually was given to the town in a deed which stipulated that it was to remain a park, and I think at that point in time was designated a kite park. I don't have a copy of that particular deed. Perhaps you have in your file. The Boston Globe article was mentioned with the Avond Grid Commonwealth backing out of their contract with the state. The also, Greg also had mentioned the fact that this Five New England State Regional Transmission Initiative, I don't know whether any of you had followed that at all, and they had a hearing for information purposes. And many people attended the Zoom meeting, and all the stakeholders, the state's energy boards, the federal government, the, any stakeholder was involved and submitted a series of questions. And the initiative is to try and coordinate. The infrastructure is incapable of handling the input from the wind that is set to come forward in our electric system. So there's a huge infrastructure upgrading that's needed on the grid. The transmission lines are, it's been so far on a first-come, first-served basis where you get the prime location to bring your cables into, as opposed to coordinating them, running them parallel to one another, some perhaps even putting them in the same trench, taking them to a more distant location, but closer to the energy, the source where the energy is required or needed. The bottom line is, as Mr. Brown mentioned, in the first go-around, when the test boring was done at Worcester Court Park and Central Park, before Mayflower even came back to us with test results, if I'm not mistaken, they had submitted that to the state in their application. So as much as we say it's not a commitment, and the wordings are, the wording is in the agreement that it is not a commitment, Mayflower treats it a little bit differently. They're taking it and running with it. And if we allow them to do this again in the kite field, for sure, it's going to be on the application to the Energy Facility Siting Board. I think even though this is not a commitment, we feel that the town should be more forceful in this matter and encourage Mayflower to seek a commercial site elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Bosinowski.[840.62][840.65](APPLAUSE). Mr. Neto? Mr. Neto?
Good evening, Merry Christmas.
Good evening, Mr. Neto.
I'd like to remind you of your obligation to the citizens of the town of Falmouth, to the whole town, which is to make decisions based on facts. There's been a lot of discussion here tonight. There's been a great deal of mention of opinions. I don't have a plan in front of me that I can make a decision on. I don't think they're trying to present a plan here tonight. I think we have to be objective and open-minded, and I wholeheartedly would support, hoping that you allow this company to do test borings. I do have to agree, you know, Worcester Court is not the best place to site something. I see the kite park as a much better location. To say that this is an industrial facility, well, of course, it's an industrial facility. If you look overhead and you look at every telephone pole that brings electric to your house, that's an electrical, that's an industrial facility. I have natural gas in my house. Excuse me, I'm a resident of Joe Neto, Precinct 9. I forgot to introduce myself. And also, a landowner in Falmouth Heights on Alma Road. Beneath my street, and every street, not every street in Falmouth, but the majority of the streets in Falmouth, there's natural gas from Enstar. This company is going to do nothing different as far as using public property for transmission lines, just like the gas company does, just like Enstar does. I think we should be objective and look at the whole picture and get this thing started so that we can be in a position to negotiate for what's best for Falmouth. For saying no tonight is not the answer. I'm sorry, Doug. I have to agree with Sam. You have to let this thing get started. Then we get the facts. I don't think I heard one engineer, and I'm not an engineer, come to this podium. These wind turbines and wind farms are all over Europe. Do you put the nightly news on and hear about people dying?
Mr. Neto, speak. Address the board, please.
Huh?
Just address the board, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't see it. I see the wind farm. In the '70s, the first time I went to Europe, I saw wind farms, wind turbines everywhere. And that was how many years ago? 50 years ago. They're so far ahead of us. Why? Because Europe is in an energy crisis, and it's been that way since the end of World War II. When oil was $0.28 a gallon, as some of us might remember, nobody cares about energy now when we're paying what we are. But to come to this podium and say that I'm for clean energy, green energy, as long as it's not in my backyard. I want to ask you a question. Where on the south side of Cape Cod is there an area that is not residential? It doesn't exist.
Right.
So where, where, and this is only, if I'm not mistaken, there's another one, if not two, more leases still that the federal government's going to sell. So other companies are going to come here, and they're going to look for someplace to land these cables. If we say, no, that's it, we don't even want to investigate this, then you're not being fair to the people who have elected you, because your obligation is to all nine precincts in this town, not just one or two. All precincts. And we, how can we make an opinion? How can I go to a town meeting? I imagine I'll be voting on this, go to a town meeting, and I don't have any facts. I don't know what this is going to look like. None of us do. If somebody has plans or they have something, I've never seen it. I haven't seen it published in the local paper. I don't see a set of plans here in Town Hall or a drawing. Let's just be objective about this. Let's let experts, who we rely on, engineers and medical people, answer some of these questions that these people have, and they're legitimate questions. But this has been going on for Europe for a lot longer than it is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neto. Mr. Fineran. I'm going to take two more after Mr. Fineran, and then the board needs to have a discussion.
It seems that all indications are...
Introduce yourself, please.
Mark Fineran.
Thank you.
From Falmouth Heights. It seems that all indications are the amount of power that these turbines are going to produce is many, many times the amount of power that we consume in total on Cape Cod. Yet they want to land these lines here, and the bottom line of that is that we have one of the worst electric infrastructures in the state, if not in the country. So it's going to have to be upgraded, seriously upgraded, just to transport power through here to get somewhere else. And it's all going to show up on the delivery part of everyone's energy bill, and I don't think it's a good investment on our part at all. And personally, I have two words for Mayflower. Brant Point, where they already have the infrastructure to accept it and deliver it where they want to. I don't think we should have to pay for their infrastructure, basically. It's too much.
Thank you, Mr. Fineran.[1247.57][1247.59](APPLAUSE). Hey, I have this man, and then Mr. Dugan, and then we're going to tie it up. Come up, sir, please, and introduce yourself.
Good evening. Edward Jalowick, 120 Worcester Court, resident of Falmouth for about 26 years now, property owner, obviously, in the Heights. This original plan would have gone by my house. There were pretty involved plans shown earlier this year when they wanted to come down Worcester Court. And myself and a number of others presented information at that forum that you held and showed how much of the park we would lose. 70% of it or so would be inaccessible, no shrubs, trees, or anything allowed, because these massive trenches and power lines underground would disrupt, and you could not plant near them. So now we look at kite park again. As Dave and some others said, it's a densely populated area. Mr. Neto said, yeah, there's no area on the south coast of the Cape that isn't residential and dense. Well, actually, there are a few, Wacoit Bay, but it doesn't make sense. What does make sense? Mr. Fineran mentioned Brant Point, but that has a limited capacity. So half of what Mayflower is proposing in their total build-out wind farm would go to Brant Point. They've got issues there with the state of Rhode Island. Where else could they go? Well, go up Luzzards Bay, up the canal, no residential area, and there's a power plant there to spend their free years. It has new owners, a Japanese-based company, I believe, very recently, in the past few weeks, received final approval for the purchase of that property. Their expressed intention is to work with the wind farm companies to bring their cables to that pre-existing industrial site. The infrastructure is there. The massive cables to carry it back and forth across the canal are there, and yet I don't think they're even looking at it. There has been no outreach or dialogue with the new owners of the canal plant. It's there. It makes sense. Don't have cables coming. I think someone mentioned there's two different points in Barnstable that they're digging up now. Massive mess. Take a look at some of the aerial pictures that were in the paper just a few weeks ago, front page of the Cape Cod Times. We don't want it, need it in Falmouth. It's inappropriate. It's too big for that very dense area with the little streets that was mentioned. They should be looking at that site, and I think, Mr. Brown, thank you for taking a bold stand that, no, maybe we should just say enough. Stop goofing around with us and look elsewhere. Falmouth can't handle this and doesn't want it. Please take the appropriate action and say, no, you've got to go elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1424.82][1424.85](APPLAUSE). Great. One more, one more comment. One more comment, and then the board will have a discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Dugan.
Robert Dugan, Falmouth Heights. I've actually got a question about the agreement that you're looking at, the draft. So on page two, item C, and I know you said this was agreed between the town and the wind company. It basically says in here, if you don't give a response within 10 business days, you're granting your consent. And I would like to know that why would the town want to agree to that kind of line in an agreement? Because it basically takes away any of your power if you want to do a change. That's just an item C. Now, I looked over this briefly tonight, but I think there might be other issues in the agreement itself. So if you have to go forward on an agreement like this, I would hope that somebody would do another overview of it, just to make sure there are no parts of this that somebody else can use to their advantage. I just have never heard that before. My other question, I know you had questions for Mayflower to answer. So I was at the Lawrence School, and I asked a very specific question. Mayflower had applied for a waiver to bypass all our local zoning. That waiver is agreed to, the town has no power to enforce any of our zoning laws regarding this project. I want to know if they have withdrawn that waiver or if they're going forward with it, because they keep saying that they want to work with the town and work with the neighborhoods. But that completely takes all the power the town has. I mean, you couldn't enforce anything regarding the zoning. It just, it seems very disingenuous for a company to say that we're here to help the town. They did a great marketing campaign. They, you know, supported the road races or all the nonprofits to get the names on everything, which is great, which makes it sound like it is great benefit to the town. But bypassing local zoning is one of the worst mistakes a town can make, and it affects everyone in the town, affects every single precinct, not just precincts 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan.[1552.82][1552.85](APPLAUSE). Would you come up and answer three questions, please? So the first question was, the town is waiting for answers to the questions that came up in our June 8th meeting. Are they forthcoming?
They are forthcoming. We had planned to have a follow-on public, public meeting where we're going to address a number of the, address those questions. I'll see if I can accelerate that, and we'll work it through, to be available through the town.
Okay. The second question was, what is the start date? But I'm not sure.
So I think your question was regarding, like, onshore works, where, when construction may...
Well, we don't want to fall into the doctrine of latches like we did last time with the other renewable...
Could there, is there a projected start date?
Roughly the end of '24.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then the last question, is the waiver to bypass all local zoning, has that been withdrawn?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Let's have a conversation among the board folks, please. You can, you can sit. The board's just going to...
Well, I also had questions, and I did forward a study that a Falmouth resident gave me, the Brattle Group study, saying that this whole wind energy idea should be thought through more carefully by higher-level governments than local select boards, and that they should be considering consolidating their efforts and working in industrial sites. And personally, I was going to suggest that the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant site, I know it's a longer cable, it's a longer trip. The canal site sounds great. I'm just not really getting, I never got a response to my email, my question. I forwarded the copy of the report, and I asked if this report, if they had knowledge of it, and would they respond if, you know, they think the information is interesting or correct. And I also asked in that email, can I get a, an answer why this report hasn't been considered? Because it said, really, all the energy should go into these type of existing brownfield sites that are being repurposed. So I agree. I mean, we should get answers to our questions, and there should be more information made available prior to us continuing to make commitments, so.
So are you, let me just understand, understanding, are you talking about not just changing or modifying any sort of boring sites, but not doing anything at this point? I just want to make sure I'm clear in what I'm hearing.
Well, my initial comment was that I know that in previous discussions, we've asked them to reconsider other sites, and the kite park was one. So I'm not initially inclined to deny that access, but the other two sites, I am inclined, because I just don't feel good about those sites anymore. I don't think it's practical.
So would you like to make, any other comments? And then we'll, we'll think about a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
The comment I have is that, you know, we have some generational issues that are facing us, and the decisions are not just affecting us over the next 25 years. They're going to affect generations into the future. And one of them is the use of energy, its impact on the environment, you know, that my granddaughter, I only have one grandchild, is going to inherit all of the impacts that our generation... Now, we didn't individually ask for these impacts, but they're happening just because collectively, all of us, in the technologies that we've grown to become accustomed to and implemented, have created impacts. And those impacts are going to be affecting our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren long after we're gone. And I just don't want us to forget that we do owe, we owe something to the future generations of our race, and particularly of Falmouth. And I... And I, this little bit of an accommodation to get some more facts that can help a board, which has to deal with these, if you will, regional issues in the United States, you know, New England-type issues of where do we generate the power we, you know, we need to provide the kind of quality of life that we're used to without further impacting the environment? And I think that's the big question that we have to take seriously, and if it represents accommodating something locally for the benefit of a larger area and our future generations, I think we have to take a very close look at when we just stonewall to prevent something like this going forward. And I think there is a...
Excuse me? Sir?
I think there is a benefit...
Stop.
...to raising these issues up to a larger board that's looking at the bigger picture and has to take our local situation into consideration and the impacts locally, be it to local businesses, or the health of people and what have you. I'm a physicist by background, and I do not see any health effects from high voltage DC going through. That's not the kind of magnetic fields that actually couple into the body and change chromosomes or what have you that cause mutations. Alternating current, yes, but I actually worked for the government's Electromagnetic Compatibility Analysis Center for five years, and 60 Hz does not cause physical change to the human body. And direct current is just like the magnetic fields of the earth, it's constant. And we've lived, you know, human beings have lived in this kind of environment, magnetic field environment, for literally millennia, and it's just part of our environment. We have more toxins that we pick up from the earth than we get out of the electric, the magnetic fields and electric fields that exist already. And so there is a, a body of knowledge that can inform these decisions. And I would suggest to you, you should reach out and understand the science behind it before you make these kinds of statements. I feel like we have to take into consideration the future generations that will live in Falmouth, and how we somehow live with our earth and our environment. And we know that it's not just providing power to us, electric power to us, we have environmental issues. How do we live in this environment so that future generations will be able to have the same quality of life that we have today?
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Zelinski?
Yeah, Madam Chair, with all due respect to Mr. Patterson and Mr. Netto, I'm unwilling to relinquish this responsibility to a greater board. I think we do have a responsibility to our community. And while I agree with Mr. Patterson's point, we need other alternatives, this isn't the time for that. And I would be happy to make a motion, if you're willing to take it.
I would like to know more of the big picture, why other sites, like have been suggested, aren't being considered, and why it's not feasible, before we start jamming this stuff into residential areas.
I agree.
Madam Chair, just final comments. I think a lot of good points have been raised here, especially the point of about Article 97. I think that does not necessarily show good faith by Mayflower Wind to still have that in motion, but, so that, that's just my feeling.
I would comment further that the communication has not been especially good. I remember when we found out about the filing, it was because we found out through another source, not from Mayflower. So I just don't feel strong about the partnership that we're considering, so that's another reason for my reluctance.
So would you like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd, I'd make the motion to deny the applicant's request in its totality.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will move on. We have a broadband update, which I have allotted 10 minutes for. Yeah, well?
Bring him, let me?
Of course I do. Giles?
Who?
Giles?
Larry Bean. What's the matter with you?
I didn't see your...
I don't know. Something's wrong.
Madam Chair, Dr. Alan Steinbach will make the opening and closing.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Can you wait one second, Dr. Steinbach? Let's just clear out.
Before the jet plane leaves.
Okay, go ahead. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Alan Steinbach. I'm a family practice physician. I'm also a retired clinical professor in public health. My family came to Falmouth or Woods Hole in the 1930s to do science at MBL, and I think I left my last children's school of science class in about '55. And now I'm 80, and I get to take care of people in Falmouth, work with their health, which has been a real joy. But the reason I'm here tonight is because health is something more than just the practice of medicine. We all know that it starts with housing, and continues with good food, and I will argue, and we hope you will understand, that it also includes things like broadband access. So I found out about the affordability, Affordable Connectivity Program, the ACP, which you'll hear more about, and it's in your package, and the Internet Essentials Plus, or IEP, and why they would be important in making Falmouth more affordable. And once again, I really believe that affordable access by people eligible incomes perhaps can be really important for health, generally. So I've joined with Peter and with David here, advocating for affordable broadband. And tonight, what we wanted to do was share our thoughts and ask you for your ideas about trying to deal with this problem of getting affordable broadband access for Falmouth. Now, perhaps the most important member of our group, Peter Clark, couldn't be here tonight, but as you probably know, he worked for 32 years in various things, ending as a superintendent of schools. And I'm sure you're actually familiar with his work. He's picked up this work also because he feels, as an educator, that it's important. I'd like to introduce David Eisenberg, that I think some of you may know, who will give the main thoughts that we have and arguments, and we will be brief. Thank you.
Can we get our presentation up? Thank you, Peter.
We need access.
Oh, thanks. We're all without access.
And we'll, we'll start your time, Mr. Eisenberg, right now.
So as all of you except Scott know, I'm David Eisenberg. Pleased to meet you, Scott.
Hi, David. How are you?
Good. I grew up here. My dad taught, was an MBL scientist. My mother taught at Woods Hole School when it was part of the Falmouth school system with Emma Barrow and Dorothy Turkington. I attended Falmouth schools through eighth grade, and then magic happened. I went over the bridge and had a career in broadband and internet services on, over there in America. And now I'm back in Falmouth to bring some of what I've learned home to the town that I love. I want to talk about two programs. They're, they're called the ACP and the IEP. There are 8,000, up to 8,000 households in Falmouth that struggle to pay their bills each month, and these are the households that qualify for the ACP and the IEP. Most of the 8,000 are year-round, some are seasonal, and the ACP and the IEP together have the potential to zero out these low-income households' internet bills each month. The ACP provides a $30 a month discount on lower-income households' internet bills. It's a federal program. Both Comcast and Verizon DSL customers are eligible for this $30 a month benefit. The White House estimates that 43% of U.S. households qualify for ACP, so lower income is very broadly defined. The second program is a Comcast program called Internet Essentials Plus, or IEP. IEP is open to all Comcast customers that qualify for the ACP. And IEP provides a fast internet connection for $29.95 a month, so it's fully covered by the $30 a month ACP benefit. And, and the equivalent service that Comcast offers has a retail price of $97.95 a month, probably going up in January by three bucks. The $30 a month ACP benefit, as I said, it completely covers the $29.95 IEP, and so if a household only has internet, the charge is zero. To date, Falmouth agencies have signed up 22 lower-income households to the ACP, out of approximately 8,000. And I've personally coached four, and today another fifth one is in progress, through the ACP and IEP application process. And in those previous four cases, the bill did indeed go to zero. Now, it's complicated to apply for the ACP and the IEP. Every one of the four people that I helped told me spontaneously that they wouldn't have been able to do it themselves, they would have given up. It's just really complicated, and there's a lot of misinformation. Part of the problem is that Comcast is reimbursed for ACP, but not for IEP. So Comcast tends to underplay the IEP side of the benefit. Another part of the problem, and you won't be surprised by this one, is that the town and social service agencies are already way overburdened with other priorities. So back in June, I became aware that these federal grants were coming along to help towns like ours apply for, for reach out, do outreach to lower-income households, and that these grants would potentially staff and fund town outreach efforts. I wrote several letters to Falmouth agencies who could have applied, but unfortunately, due to Falmouth's competing priorities and a January 9 deadline, which is like now, it is no longer possible to achieve a sufficiently strong application, and so we've stopped working towards that goal. Now, the three of us, Alan, Peter, Clark, and I, have taken the initiative ourselves as volunteers to publicize ACP and IEP to Falmouth agencies and lower-income households. We proposed and are working towards recruiting and training a group of volunteers to coach lower-income Falmouth citizens to apply for ACP and IEP. We also propose to educate ourselves and other like-minded Falmouth citizens to be able to respond in a timely and energetic manner when new internet affordability grants and programs appear. And of course, we strongly support the more permanent solution to the problem, which is the project that FalmouthNet is engaged in to create a competitive town-wide fiber-optic network. Back to you, Alan. Thank you for your time. Do you want to get to slide five? Okay. You have slide five in your packet.
Yeah, we, we can read them. Go ahead.
Always computer videos. Just to sum up, what we're asking tonight is basically on the slide in your packet. Item number one is to acknowledge the benefit of the ACP/IEP. These aren't gimmicks, they're programs that are fully in place, but it's difficult to get into them, and we need help. So if publicized and given direct support, ACP and IEP could really improve the access of income-eligible people. And number two is to endorse volunteer efforts to qualify, enroll qualifying households. David's great at this, but there's only one of him. I'm learning, but I'm slow. We want to try to actually get a volunteer corps who could work with this, and we hope to work with, with agencies that already do work in the way of trying to, to improve health, in my case, but improve access to affordable internet. We'd also like you to urge town departments to assist in this enrollment effort. They have a lot to do, but perhaps you'll be able to come up with ways that programs sponsored by the town could be involved and support an ACP/IEP enrollment process. And finally, we really would like to support, or have you support readiness to apply for future internet affordability. So we'd like to see a stronger town response to future broadband affordability grants and other programs than we were able to get this time. So it's three of us at this point, but we hope that with your help, it'll become more than that. So we ask for your support, our efforts and ideas that might help make affordable and essential broadband accessible for Falmouth. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
We'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the board?
Is there a way we can assemble a, a citizens group that could authorize, or to be authorized to apply for these grants, rather than staff having to do it?
So, you know, I, I thought perhaps what I was hearing is that these volunteer folks were going to do that on their own, and that's probably going to be quicker and more efficient than the board appointing a group.
May I respond to that? There's, there's at least one very quick start, and that is the Falmouth Public Schools could, with a simple call to Comcast, fast-track this. How, there's about 40%, Sam has told me this several times, about 40% of Falmouth school kids are on the school lunch program. Is that still correct, Sam? Okay. So the, if the Falmouth schools sent letters home to those kids where the parents could waive privacy for the sole purpose of contacting Comcast, saying, my kid is on the school lunch program, those households would be on the ACP and the IEP. It would require the town to work with Comcast and Verizon, but primarily Comcast, and, and it would be a fast-track way to get approximately, there's 3,000 kids, so it would be 1,300, 1,400 households onto the ACP/IEP program. That's just one example.
I, I think that would be a presentation to the school committee and to the superintendent.
We have, we have been in touch, we've tried to reach the superintendent, we've reached her assistant, we've had discussions with Henry St. Julian, thanks to Peter Clark, but there again, it's a matter of priorities and...
Yeah, I, I understand.
...inflicting burdens and so on, but it's really, it wouldn't be a big effort, and, and it would be a huge bang for the buck.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
How do we move it forward? I mean, what can we do? I know you said the grant process was not practical at this time, and I understand that.
I mean, so, you know, the, as was mentioned, there are several departments that put some specific, some significant energies toward promoting the availability of these programs and, you know, hosting some forums and events. So they, you know, certainly the town can be a partner in a limited way in terms of offering facilities, promoting signup events, but, you know, I, I think it needs to be primarily a voluntary, a volunteer-driven effort.
Great.
And, and the, you know, the request of the board is to acknowledge, you know, the validity of these programs, and certainly, you know, we can do that. I don't, you know, I don't know if that's a vote, but, you know, I, I applaud the efforts. There's, you know, I don't think anyone in this room disagrees that affordable internet is incredibly important. This is a terrific opportunity to take advantage of, and I applaud... And I applaud these gentlemen for their efforts in promoting these programs and getting some folks signed up for them. And as I said, I know that, you know, there were events held by various staff departments that did have some success in getting folks signed up, but it is a bit of a slog.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I don't really consider my five applicants, or the rest of the town's 22 applicants, to be a success when there's up to 8,000. There's thousands and thousands of households that qualify. These are the people who wait our tables and mow our lawns and shingle our roofs and that can't find housing in town, or when they do, we should be supporting them. We need scalability here. 22 people, 30 people isn't enough. We need ways of reaching hundreds or thousands of people. And the benefit to the town would be somewhere around $8 or $10 million a year, if we reached everybody, which, who knows? But that's the potential addressable benefit. And that money, when it goes into a low-income household, it comes out immediately at the grocery store, at the laundromat, at the gas station. And this is money that goes right back into Falmouth's economy. So, I think that these efforts should, you know, when you're, you know, the head of the school system, for example, and you're looking at, "Where do I put my limited staff?" Well, it's one thing to put your limited staff to say, "Well, this person doesn't have time." But if you think about the whole benefit to the whole town, you know, what does $97.95 mean to a household that's only making $24,000 a year? Quite a lot, you know, a lot more than most of us think about. We have difficulty finding households that are that, at that level of income. We don't know people like that. Part of it, you know, we're in sort of a higher-income bubble, and we kind of don't really understand. Now, I've now met and worked with five households that are struggling to make ends meet. And they really live in a quite a different world, and they could be much more effective contributors to the life of our town if they had free internet access.
Okay. Let's, we need to bring it back to the board. Mr. Brown?
Can we?
Thank you, Chair Taylor.
Can we craft a letter to the chair of the school committee seeking partnership on this to try to move it forward? And I would volunteer to attend their meeting and put forth any relevant facts that they might want to consider for going forward?
You know, so my struggle here is that, you know, I don't have an employee that has free time to take on an initiative that's outside of their core mission.
Right.
And I'm sure the superintendent and all of her staff are busy as well. So, I, you know, again, I think there are ways that the town can support these efforts. But in terms of taking a lead, in terms of dedicating significant staff time, I guess I just question, you know, how it fits into the strategic plan and the priorities, given all of the core functions that we're, you know. I'm just fresh off of saying no to departments for hiring more custodians.
Yeah. I'm not talking about staff work. I'm just saying, can we partner the select board, partner with the school committee to try to get a volunteer base of some sort going so that there's a group of people that are helping people that are trying to get this internet service hooked up? We'd be creating a citizens' group of some sort. But really, it's the school, as David mentioned, that we could do the initial outreach to identify potential customers that could be benefiting from this. Could be a volunteer effort to move it forward. I just want to reach out to the school committee formally to make them aware of that this is something that we could maybe consider.
And I think that the school can put out information. They cannot give out names or any data regarding kids.
Right.
You cannot do that.
I'm not looking for that.
So, no, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm saying that this is just part of the conversation. You can invite families and kids as, you know, as part of what the school could do. Whether they take you up on that is up to them. And that's where I think it gets a little funny.
If I could add one point that might be helpful.
Quickly, because we need, we're going to move on.
You might remember that it was difficult to reach people about the whole COVID program. The most successful programs in Chicago and the West Coast that I'm familiar with were ones that started with a letter to parents. So, but I think what we really want is your support, and I think we've got your understanding.
Yes, and I think you have our support.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
We'll be working with you individually as time goes on. Thank you very much, Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Just before you go, I mean, the school committee meets on a regular basis also. You can look it up on our website. It's underneath the school committee and their agenda. And you can reach out to them, and they have a public comment period during their meetings as well. So, it seems to me that that's a communication overture that you can make, aside from a staff member, you know, that might actually generate some thinking, "Oh, that's a good idea," and maybe they could then form that citizens' group to help you carry that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We're going to do, talk about the town manager select, did you hit something? Oh, town manager selection process?
I'm saying about it.
Please, there you go.
I'll be back for the consent agenda.
Please. Okay. So, number one, I asked each board member to select a name of someone they would like to put forward to serve on the screening committee as we look forward to the new town manager process. And each person submitted a name to me. This is all in collaboration with Rick White, who is our consultant, with whom each of you have spoken. And he thought that five was a really good number. So, what I would like to do is two things. I would like to announce the names that you've all submitted to me, and you've all been able to get a commitment from each of the people. I'm doing them alphabetically. And then, the second piece of that is, we need to think about appointing a chair for that committee. So, the names that came to me are Kathryn Bumpus, Frank Duffy, Dave Garrison, Natalie Navarez, and Keith Schwegel. So, what I would ask the board first to do is to, I would entertain a motion to approve that slate of people for the screening committee. So moved.
Second?
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I want to thank each one of them for their willingness to serve on this committee. And the second piece is to nominate a chair.
Ma'am Chad, move Mr. Schwegel as the chair. I think he does a very good job in his meetings, and a lot of respect for him, and I think that he'd do a great job with this.
Second?
I'd agree with that.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to nominate Keith Schwegel as the chair of the screening committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Schwegel's here.
And I see Kathryn Bumpus, the end, Mr. Schwegel. Surprise, surprise. Thank you both for your willingness to serve.
Here, here.
Second piece, I have been going back and forth and having conversations with Rick White, our consultant, and I don't know if you have, but I'm thinking about a community input forum. This can be the entire board. This can be two members or three members. It would be posted as a meeting, obviously, if it were three or more, just simply to listen to community feedback on what people are looking for in the next town manager. I know that Rick White has reached out to people. He's spoken to people. He's spoken to department heads. He's spoken to people who work at town hall and for the town. I'd like to just broaden that a little bit.
My hope that it would be all of us.
Yeah, I would think it would be a regular with a full meeting.
I would like it.
Specifically for that.
That's all it would be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not to jump here, but I do see that you also have a webpage for community input. So, I like the idea of doing a full board meeting and then having a place where people could submit online if they weren't able to attend that meeting.
We could do both of those. That would be great. So, any suggestions about the month, the venue? Would you want to do it at the Lawrence School? Would you want to just do it here?
I would think that there'd be a pretty good turnout for that.
I do, too.
I mean, you just saw how many people were in this room. I think there would be a bigger turnout. It would encourage a greater turnout if we had a bigger venue, I would think.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my thought.
I agree.
Well, that'd be fine for the public comment. I just want to caution us against being too, going too far. I mean, the diversity and equity inclusion hire was just so complex. It took a long time, and I just don't want this process to take
Big job, Doug.
Especially a long time.
This is a huge, this is, from my perspective, this is the most important thing that we do.
Yeah.
And I think that getting feedback from the community, from pockets that we maybe never hear from, but at least inviting people. And then, I agree, I put down a webpage for community input so that people could do it. And we wouldn't be necessarily asking questions or doing anything. They would be bringing feedback to us. And we can limit, you know, how long people can speak. But I think it's really important. And I think that when you do something like this, you see and hear themes. And that's really what we're looking for, right? Themes of what people want in the next town manager. I think it's really important to do that. I certainly understand what you're saying, Doug, and we can limit the amount of time.
Oh, I don't mean that. I mean the process.
Yeah.
One public hearing.
Yeah. That would be it. Just one.
It should just be concise and
Exactly. And a place to post. If you can't get there, there'll be a place on the website.
Right.
So, I will go back and talk to Rick White about when we should do that. I'd rather do it sooner rather than later, so that we don't hold anything up. But as long as the board agrees with that, I can move forward on those two things. And I certainly will put out dates to you before I actually book it and see if we can use the Lawrence School. Okay. So, thank you very much for that. And then, the last piece is to vote a salary range. And what was sent to me from Rick is the Cape and Islands Town Manager Salary Survey. And I just wanted you to take a look at it. Because you'll see the different columns, and you'll see on the back, it will talk about the years in the current job. Right now, my understanding is that the town manager position is funded at the amount of $201,000. I just want to make sure that we have some sort of range as we move forward.
Well, this survey sort of suggests $180,000 to $200,000 is a range.
Mm-hmm.
There's the question of benefits.
Right. And those, that would come up during negotiations. So, I'm not sure we can do much with that right this minute. But if the board would sort of give me a salary range, I will take that back to Rick White.
I think it's important that we stay competitive, so.
I agree.
Absolutely right. I would stay to what we're at right now, anyway.
Yeah, the $180,000 to $200-ish?
How about relocation expenses? Because that's going to be significant for anybody that has to move into the community.
And that would be, I think, part of negotiations as well.
That would be a one-time, right?
Yes.
That's true.
I mean, I look at Sandwich FY '23, that's $210,000. And I was thinking, because we're, you know, we were at 200, I was really thinking, I don't know, 200 to 210, but
Well, that, that makes us, I would certainly go with the board on that.
I support that.
That has, that person has 33 years of experience.
Yes.
That's a lot.
What if we have somebody that's not used to being paid that much, but is qualified? Why would we not have a lower?
Well, that's why, that's why the range is $180,000.
Right.
Well, you said $180,000, but she said $200,000.
I did. I thought, I thought more competitive, but I, that's just a suggestion on my end.
But we're moving a range, right?
We're doing a range.
Well, then, that's part of the negotiation ranges, right?
Right.
But that's what I'm saying. I wouldn't want to throw out the $180,000, or maybe even start at $190,000 up to $210,000. But I wouldn't want to just go over 200,000 and say, "That's it."
Fair enough. So, come up with a range.
$180,000 to $210,000.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. $180,000 to $210,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I don't need a new job.
All right.
Yeah, if you don't want this one, no.
I do not.
Peter can come back. Actually, no, Doug. I'm going to text him because I'm going to keep moving, and I'd like to do the annual license renewals.
No, we don't need him to do that.
Sure.
We don't need him for that, no. And I, thank you, Kathryn, very much. Thank you, Keith Schwegel. Okay. So, just again, I'll remind the board that we have a little bit of a difference in practice to approve the annual license renewals for 2023. As long as they are printed on the agenda, we do not have to read them. So, I would entertain a motion. Where is Sam going?
He's drawing up popcorn.
Okay.
So moved to approve the annual licenses.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One exception?
So, that, that is a four to zero, because Mr. Patterson wasn't here for the vote. So, we will move on to the consent agenda, and I will read the administrative orders. If anyone wants to hold anything for discussion, please notify the chair. Approve preservation restriction, West Falmouth Library, 575 West Falmouth Highway. Approve Eversource petition to install a new handle hole to be labeled 15/H36A and to install approximately 40 feet of conduit and cable under the town road, starting at existing pole 1536. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 21 Little Island Road. And C, approve Eversource easements for Surf Drive and Mill Road. I'll entertain a motion to approve items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the minutes. Any issues with the minutes?
I got a question on the first set of minutes. The time of the meeting wasn't listed. Is that essential?
Is that the June 6th?
It should be listed.
Can that be added?
Of course.
Easy enough, right? Well, I read them and found them to be a pretty good summary of actions and deliberation what was covered. So, I would
That's one thing I noticed, that I think it's on the same set that Mr. Bowen was mentioned on the page seven in supplemental report. It's listed as Richard Bowen, but I believe it's John Bowen.
Where, which set of minutes?
The same first set.
There's a June 8th?
I think it was. Take a look here. Yeah, license awarded to Richard Bowen, $102,000. It's John Bowen.
So, was the license issued to Richard or John? You met it in the minutes, I'm sorry.
I'm sure it was, I'm sure the license was issued to the right person.
Okay. Just checking.
Do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to
And release the public access.
I have motion to approve Monday, November 7th, 2022 minutes.
I'm sorry. I thought we were on June, the earlier one, June 6th, June 8th, excuse me.
Oh, okay.
I was wondering, where on earth did you see that?
November 7th.
We're mixing them. There were comments on both.
Exactly. So, I was saying, okay, so let's start with June, well, actually, we have a motion on the 7th.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, hold on a second. Number eight, excuse me, page eight. Action would be the soonest to fund construction. Oh, never mind. I won't, I guess I, all right. I withdraw, I don't have a question. I'm going to be satisfied with what's there.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve Monday, November 7th, 2022. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve Monday, November 7, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's look at, let's go back to June 8, 2022. That was just the, was a time issue?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. So
I, I would move approval of the minutes of June 8th and release for public access.
Okay, with the addition of the time, correct?
Correct.
Amended. Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of Wednesday, June 8th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was actually referring to the 7th when I said the time was missing. It's missing on my printed page here.
Yeah, it, it's not on the 8th either, however.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we could amend both of those, just to put the time.
Keeping the options open.
Okay, there is a time on Monday, December 5, 2022. Any corrections?
I found them to be substantially correct, so I would move to approve and release for public, public access.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of Monday, December 5, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Town manager supplemental report.
I am pleased to report that the fire station construction bids have come in under budget.
Wow.
All right.
Whoa.
Amazing.
Really?
So they are, I know it is, it is hard to believe.
Don't think that this could
They are still under review. We have an apparent low bidder that is, as I said, under budget.
Great.
And that is all I have for our report. Our next meeting is Saturday, January 7.
Thank you very much. Any select board reports?
As I reported briefly earlier, the waterways committee was, they are really anxious about the amount of work that is going to be needed in the near future, and I want to just transmit to the board that there's going to be a lot more financial requests coming from the waterways committee, because it's a lot of, a lot of work to be done. The new dredge guy is, seems to be really handling things well, and everyone's really pleased with the work that does get done, but the permitting is the biggest challenge for the dredging projects, and that's why we mentioned the fact that there might be a request coming from the committee to create a fund for, when you run into trouble in your project permitting and you need another consultant or something, because that's another reason why we're often behind on the schedules, because we don't have these reserves. Every time we need to get funding for a project, we have to go back to select board, go back to town meeting. By the time you get around to getting it funded, the project has changed, and, you know, can become a vicious cycle of those. So that's the waterways this week.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, well, I attended a number of meetings on affordable housing, including the working group for the fund, and also Senator Moran's Zoom meeting on 40B regulations. It was an interesting discussion. The senior senator lunch was a real delight. I know that Doug and I were there to, to serve to the people that showed up for it. It was
It was pretty cool.
It was cool indeed, and it was just nice to be able to interact with people on that basis, so that was a lot of fun. In a similar vein, I've been, I was asked to provide a Cub, let's see, I guess it said Cub Den, Cub Scout Den, presentation on government, including US government and Bill of Rights, and down to the local level, and the kind of services that our government provides, and that, that was a lot of fun. And surprised how interactive and how many questions those 10-year-olds, I guess they were 10 and 11-year-olds, were asking was very gratifying as a teacher to have students who were so interested in asking questions, so that was actually a lot of fun. A reminder that the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting is on June, January, January the 20th. If you want to spend the night at the Sheridan, you better get your reservation in, because I understand the rooms are going fast. And I'm driving up on the 20th. I'm not, I'm going to come back after the banquet at the end of the 20th, so anybody that would like to ride with me is certainly welcome to. I'd be happy to have the company. The last thing is, I, I actually, it came up on our website, I mean, the, the select board website, town website. AAA had an electric vehicle charging station forum that they actually hosted, and there were representatives from Massachusetts that promote these kinds of things, and from Rhode Island and Connecticut. I found it to be very interesting, but I think really an indication of the wave of the future. Obviously, the Automobile Association of America is a non-political body. I'm sure they're political, but they're basically saying, you know, the wave of the future is going to be in electric vehicles, and we want to try to find out ways to basically make sure people can get their electric vehicles charged. And I can confess that when I was visiting my family over Thanksgiving, I have a nephew that has a Tesla, never driven one, and he just, much to my surprise, said, hey, would you like to drive it? It's an impressive vehicle, and anybody has any doubt about performance, I hope you have a chance to actually drive one of these vehicles. It's an interesting experience. A Tesla would be a high end, but I know that the operating cost for electric vehicles is expected to be significantly lower than it is for internal combustion engines, be they gasoline or, or diesel fuel. But anyway, so those are the two, well, some of the things that I've participated in over the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Ms. Scott Price?
So I had the pleasure of doing the Habitat for Humanity build on December 6. I thought we were going to be painting. We were not painting. I was in buildings that did not have walls in them. It was a little bit chillier than I thought it was going to be, but it was good. It was a nice, rewarding experience. It was a lot of fun. It was great to have Maureen there from the CPC and Kim from the, our affordable housing coordinator. So that was really nice to have some town representation. And then I missed everything for the next week because I was in Chicago, so.
Getting an award.
Yes.
Getting recognized.
Yes, and attending a conference, but I am sad that I missed a lot of other great activities happening.
Thank you. Mr. Zalinski?
Good.
You're good? Okay. I will, discussion of future agenda items? Anything anyone wants to add? We've got busy agendas coming up.
We've got a couple we're waiting to get to, so I'm not going to make any new ones.
I, I agree. I don't want to add any more just yet. Okay, then I will enter
I'm sorry, maybe there is one. Go ahead. Can we get an update on that, that lift station issue at the, on Robbins Road? When it, when we are finally ready to get some information, I know you, you've reached out, I think, for some engineering consulting at this point? I don't know where the town is.
I believe it's due in February.
It is due, okay. So we, we can expect a report in February? So it'll be on a February agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great holiday.